Good evening. I am going to call to order the June 17th, 2024 School Committee Meeting. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town in Hingham in accordance with the Open Meeting Law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. We have Harbor Media recording, thank you very much. And for purposes of the minutes, we are also recording on Zoom. Is there anybody in the audience or online recording? If you can throw your hand up. Okay. Okay, so something very special added to the agenda before we get to our next item of business. We have some retirees to recognize, and it is with mixed emotions that we say a farewell and express our deepest gratitude to our retiring principal, teachers, and staff. You've shaped the minds of students and inspired so many to reach their full potential. The impact extends far beyond the classroom walls. Your wisdom and experience will be missed. I know that the influence will continue to resonate with those that you have come in contact with. I was not part of the South community, for example, but Mary's expressions will stay with me forever: be respectful, responsible, be ready to learn, and be kinder than necessary. And I know similar stories will evolve from the people that you have touched. We wish you all the best in this exciting new chapter of your life. Here tonight, Wendy has been a dedicated member of the Hingham Public Schools for over 30 years. And although we're sad to see her go, we're excited for her next chapter as an official retiree. We know she's got big plans, I hear, to travel and be with her three kids. Wendy has been a valuable colleague for so many reasons. Her ability to help students grow, her knowledge of all things speech, and her consultation and work with our lab and CLC programs at East have been invaluable. Wendy is also a bright and positive, always smiling and bringing humor and light to the East School community, and she will be missed. So congratulations, but we'll miss her. And we have something to give you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We'll give you another gift. You do not have to stay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We do also want to recognize some other staff who are retiring, who were recognized this week and last week at their individual schools. Peter Healy taught high school math since 1999, has been a great pillar of the high school math department for a full quarter century. Whether he was teaching algebra, geometry, or anything else under the sun, Peter fills his classrooms with warmth, empathy, and kindness. He brought the same attributes to the high school stellar math team, where he helped Hingham mathletes reach for excellence. He will be greatly missed. Also at the high school, Anita Levy Sisk, during a career that included lengthy stints at both the middle school and high school as an English and drama teacher, she brought passion and energy to both her classroom and the stage. As an English teacher and drama club advisor, she made an impact that will be remembered throughout the community. At PRS, Nancy Swanson. We are grateful to Nancy because she's been a tremendous help, twice coming to the rescue as a long-term substitute position, as an elementary Spanish teacher both at South and Plymouth River. She came to Hingham's Public Schools after many years of service as a Spanish teacher in local private schools. In addition, at PRS, we're grateful to Janet Whitcomb. Janet was a kindergarten paraprofessional at PRS. She had so much empathy for every child who walked through the door and treated them as if they were her own. She dedicated her time to the students, ensuring that every day at PRS was their best day. Janet also dedicated many years to Kids in Action as well. Susan Carey, an administrative assistant at PRS, also is retiring. Susan came to PRS after some time as a paraprofessional at the middle school, and during her tenure at PRS, she was a joy to have around and tended to her office with care and confidentiality, as she diligently helped us set up IEP meetings and get paperwork out to families. Susan was a nice, kind, and cared for those who she worked with. And finally, we want to honor Mrs. Eastwood. Mary Eastwood, since 1978, has given a long career to the Hingham Public Schools. She started her career as a middle school social studies teacher in 1978. Later, she became a special education teacher for grades K through six at South Elementary School, and later became a fifth-grade teacher. She rose to the role of principal at South and has dedicated 45 years to the Hingham Public Schools. As Ms. Eastwood is often being heard saying to both students and staff and families, "Be kinder than necessary." Kindness, generosity, empathy, all that Mrs. Eastwood has done in her career, she leaves a strong legacy at South and at Hingham that exemplifies these core values. So we are grateful to her, as well as all our retirees. I got to see the start dates on some of those. I'm peeking over Margaret's shoulder, and it's amazing how long-winded some of these people have been here. Thank you. Okay, I guess I have to get back to business. All right, so we've got number two approval of minutes. We've got three sets of minutes to approve, if people are ready.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from May 6th, 2024, on the second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from June 3rd, 2024, on the second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the Salary Negotiation Subcommittee with Participation or the Full Subcommittee on June 11th, 2024, on the second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No. Okay. All right, so item three. This is where we have set aside 15 minutes to take questions and comments for items that are not on tonight's agenda. Our practice is to take questions and comments during the new business items. If you plan to speak tonight, if you can throw your hand up, just so I can see whether you are before I read the statement. No. Okay. All right, so we are going to head down to item number four, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Adams?
So briefly, a couple of things in your folder today. Part of the superintendent's report, some updates. We were getting this week summer hours in the school offices and at Central Office. Full-year employees can opt to spread out their work year over four and a half days or four days. So on Fridays, there'll be very limited access in the Central Office and at the individual schools. We'll be posting information on the website and ask schools to also post information on their doors as well, in case folks are looking for information. But the best time to reach us during the summer is Monday through Thursdays, when there'll be staff most likely around. On Wednesday, just a reminder to the community, the Hingham Unity Council is putting on a celebration at the bandstand for Hingham's Juneteenth celebration. I hear there's bands, relay races, face painting, lots of activities for the community, and there's more information on the Hingham Unity Council's website. We have Erica here tonight. We want to announce, and I'm sure we'll hear more about this, an impressive 94 members of the class of 2024 received the Seal of Bilinguacy. It's a seal that recognizes high school graduates who attain high functional and academic levels of proficiency in English in a world language, and recognizing that they have studied to a high level two languages before their high school graduation. Students get a seal either on their diploma or on their transcript indicating both to future employers and college admissions that they have reached that level of proficiency. And I asked Erica how many we had last year, and I think I remember 38 or so.
Yeah, so this is a record-breaking number this year.
Yeah, 38, wow. Yeah, so it's a really impressive number, and really a testament to the high school's focus on global studies as well. Also, I put in your packet the copy of the report given by the School Building Committee to the Select Board on the progress of the new elementary foster school building. I shared that information with you. As well as the last School Building Committee on June 5th, the School Building Committee awarded the bid for the Plymouth River Columns. That work is going to get started as soon as this week with some beginning meetings and planning. The award, the bid, was significantly less than we expected, so that cost of that will be covered through the remaining funds and some also from the town as well. We also heard, got advice from both Mr. Andrews, Director of Technology, and other educational specialists about limiting access to Twitter X because of changes in their policies allowing more use, more access to adult content. So we've restricted access on the school network to Twitter X, as well as to staff starting today. We've been moving away from using it as a social media platform for the last couple of months, and we'll stop immediately using access in order to protect our students, given the changes that they've made. Another exciting announcement, the Foster Elementary School was honored with a prestigious Green Team Award by the Healy-Driscoll Administration for Outstanding Environmental Stewardship. The Foster Green Team, praised for their hands-on learning and proactive approach to food waste reduction, is one of five schools recognized for exemplary efforts. A special thank you goes to the Foster PTO and Kristin Eganman, the parent leader of the Green Team as well. So we're grateful for their efforts in promoting environmental stewardship around our young people. Summer assignments are also posted on the website. We're encouraging our students to read this summer, including students in grades four and five, middle school and high school have required reading. Those are all posted. Math assignments are optional at all grade spans, and summer assignments for placement courses are also posted and have been shared with students. In addition, in your packet, we also put in an update on enrollment numbers. You can see that there's been really no change from the previous month. These are our June 1 enrollment numbers. Also, we were excited to welcome about three weeks ago, Mary Ann Foley, as our Human Resource Coordinator. We had a little span where we had not provided a personnel update, so this is from the date of May 1st, sorry, to June 14th, both appointments, resignations, and retirements, as well as positions that are currently posted to be filled. So we expect to be able to do that on a monthly basis again, to be able to provide you some updates on personnel changes.
Great, thank you. In addition, Dr. Adams had mentioned the summer hours. I just want to make note of something that we received from the town clerk. Effective July 1st, the new hours for the town clerk office will be Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, 7:30 to 5:00 p.m., Tuesday, 7:30 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and then Friday, they will be closed going forward. This is effective July 1st. Since the town clerk's office will be closed on Fridays starting in July, any agendas that need to be posted for a Monday or Tuesday night meeting will need to be sent to them no later than 4:00 p.m. on the previous Thursday. So for example, if you have a subcommittee meeting on Tuesday, July 23rd, town hall would need to receive the agenda no later than 4:00 p.m. on Thursday, July 18th. Ordinarily, that agenda would have been posted on Friday before the weekend. Also note that for the week of July 1st, the town clerk's office will be closed on July 4th for the holiday, and then on Friday, July 5th, as per the new schedule. So any meetings that are scheduled for July 8th or 9th would need to be sent to them for posting no later than 4:00 p.m. on Wednesday, July 3rd. Okay, all right, thank you. Communications. Communications received by the superintendent? Nothing. No student, they're off. Congratulations. Anything from the committee? No. Okay. All right, so six, this is going to be the Ally Show. Unfinished business, we have, we did a few first reads at our last meeting. This isn't all of the first reads that we have, this is just five of them this time, and then we will put on the remainder, remaining ones on the next agenda. So I will let Ally take it away. Oh, she did? Oh, I got the revised. All right, great. Okay. I pulled the revised, but I didn't pull it late enough. Okay, good.
Yeah, no worries. Okay, so the first four that we went through this time, and I will refresh your memory quickly, but they all were updates. They had some minor revisions. The first one, the red lines are in your packet, but was BG School Committee Policy Development, and these were mostly revisions that were suggested by MASC that we had reviewed. So this one just had mine taken out about accepting the definition of policy from the National School Board Association, and we changed some of the wording about what the policy within our community should be and how we would use them. The next one is Policy Revision and Review, and again, there was just a few minor wording changes about the review process and how we would evaluate it, and the big change was within the wording, and we removed a few words, so it now reads, "We'll consider feedback from school staff, students, and the community when revising policies as appropriate." And then the next two are very, very minor changes. We have the word shall to will within BIBA School Committee Conferences, Conventions, and Workshops, so I know that's very controversial. And then the fourth one is BJ School Committee Legislative Program, and this one is, again, just very minor, changing dashes to commas, just updating some of the minor little pieces within there. So those four, I will go through quickly, and then I'll go through the other ones, if anyone has any questions.
The other thing is, the policies in the packet, I don't think have the changes in them.
Yeah. So there is a document, if you scroll all the way to the top, I don't know why it showed up at the top.
It's in the Word format.
Yeah, the Word format, and that one is the redline version.
Oh, okay.
For some reason, it didn't list in the purple letter.
Okay, good, thank you.
It might be, number one. You can see those four quickly there, if you have questions. The first two are the only ones that have any substantive change within them.
Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I didn't share it with you, Jim, I just shared it with someone else. They're hidden for some reason. This one's going to be challenging.
All right, do we want to move to approve these first? Somebody want to make a motion?
I can make a motion. Can I do them all four at once?
Yeah. No, separate, please. Yes, individually.
I'll make a motion to approve Policy BG School Committee Policy Development.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No. Okay.
I will make a motion to approve Policy DGC, Policy Revision and Review. One second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
I will make a motion to approve Policy DJ School Committee Legislative Program.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
And then next, Policy KDC, this is a new policy. It is community use of digital resources. It does mirror the one that we have for students already within the school. This is more for community members who are coming in and using the digital resources within the school. So Joey Andrews was working on, and I don't know if it is ready yet, but he was working on when you log on to the wireless within one of the school properties, there'd be a pop-up, and you'd have to accept the Terms of Use. So right now, if there is a pop-up, it would actually have the Terms of Use written out for you in there. And this, again, just a little added there, received DJ, so community members using the wireless and the internet within the school, and what is expected of them.
Somebody want to make a motion?
First read, right?
No.
No, second. Second.
Just so fresh. I'll make a motion to approve Policy KDC, Community Use of Digital Resources.
I'll take it.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, final two.
And then the final two. So these two were MASC suggestions for policies to be removed. They're just redundant with information within policies. The first one being Policy BEDB-E, Agenda Format, so we have these in some of our other administrative policies about how we organize our meetings. And then the second one is BK School Committee Memberships, which, again, just was no longer very relevant to anything that we knew that they suggested could be removed. Those are both in the packet.
Great. Any questions? No. Somebody want to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the removal of Policy BEDB-E, Agenda Format.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
And then I will make a motion to approve the removal of Policy BK School Committee Memberships.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, those are approved. All right, so. Thank you. All right, on to new business. 7.1, to receive recommendations, recall of employees, and act as appropriate. As you might remember, we approved our budget of $68 million before town meeting, and at town meeting, it was voted to give an additional $2 million to the school department out of fund balance. Given the MOU in place, we're required to set aside $1.4 million of those funds to fund out-of-district tuitions. Therefore, we have a net of $560,000 approximately available to allocate to other budget priorities. So Dr. Adams has an update for us.
So I provided you a memo that indicates the distribution of the $560,000 approximately, of which the majority has been used to settle increases in collective bargaining agreements, including approximately $70,000 for Unit G increases in salaries, $400,000 for Unit B, $50,000 for increases also for coaches and other stipends in the contract as well. So leaving approximately $40,000 for the recall of the middle school librarian, of which there was some interest in the community, as well as from school committee members. This would allow us to reinstate, one of the layoffs that we did was a .5 reductions. We did a .5 reduction at the middle school. This would bring that position back to a full-time position and would allow that person to be whole, as well as help us recall someone who was on the layoff list as a result. So the recommendation to the school committee is to approve and authorize that recall of staff as needed as a result of the reinstatement of the halftime librarian, library media specialist at the middle school.
Any questions, comments? Does anybody else in the public have questions or comments? Okay.
We also provided in the packet just what we had given you in May, the numbers that we know of secondary course enrollment. We are carefully looking at enrollment at the elementary schools. There are some class sizes that are approximately getting up to the policy, the cap, so we're carefully watching those. We'll watch them all summer long with the principals, and may come back with the need for an additional teacher, but for right now, we're looking okay.
Somebody want to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve and authorize the superintendent to conduct the recalls of staff as a result of the reinstatement of the .5 library media specialist position at Hingham Middle School.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No. Okay, thank you. Okay, 7.2, to receive an update on the end-of-year MTSS spring data in literacy and math. Katie Roberts heading up to the podium. Hi.
So this has now become routine. This is our second full year of our MTSS data presentations, and we have made a promise in the interest of transparency and also celebrating growth to present data at the beginning, middle, and end of year. So I wanted to thank David Jewitt and Mary Andrews for preparing the data tonight along with their teams, and of course, wanted to thank our students and classroom teachers for their hard work this year. The efforts really have paid off. So Sheri will project the slides for us. Yeah? No worries.
Thank you to all the educators who are here. I know it's your last day, and you're looking forward to going home.
This beats presenting in July, we've decided, so. I do.
There we go.
It's good to know. Thank you. And so again, this is our second full year of our newly revamped MTSS system, and this year in particular, we have really focused on making our data meetings an integral part of our practice. We've discussed at previous meetings how this year we've restructured elementary schedules to allow times for professional learning communities to take place in the morning, which has allowed us much more frequent opportunities to connect on data in addition to the beginning, middle, and end of year, also really emphasizing our progress monitoring this year. Sheri, I'll have you advance to the next slide. Thank you. And just a reminder, the data that we'll be presenting this year, Mary Andrews will be presenting our reading data, which will include our Acadience data. Our Acadience Dibbles data is for K3 and takes a look at our early literacy screening. Mary will also present the grades 3 to 5 iReady diagnostic data, and Dave Jewitt will present the K6 iReady math data. And so just wanted to just reiterate again some of the key things that we did this year. In addition to refining our MTSS interventions and data protocols, again, the emphasis this year was on those, making really good use of that professional learning community time, and also using our department and curriculum meeting time to analyze data and adjust instruction accordingly. The big news this year was, of course, our implementation of our new inter-reading program, and so next year, we'll be continuing to refine that work. Saw some really spectacular growth this year in grades 3, 5, and we'll continue to emphasize our early literacy and integration of literacy across the content areas next year. David Jewitt and his team will continue the elementary math coaching cycles that commenced last year related to our math workshop model and math practices. And as you are aware, based on our previous conversations, we'll continue to research the K5 math programs in 24, 25, with the intent to pilot a new program in 25, 26. And our last school committee meeting, I also shared that next year, thanks to Hingham Education Foundation, we'll also be taking a look at an initiative called Building Thinking Classrooms in Mathematics, which definitely syncs with our Tier 1 instruction emphasis across secondary mathematics. And so with that, I will invite Mary Andrews up. Clicker does not appear to be working, so.
Hi, everybody. Happy end of the year. Sheri, thank you. I feel like our beeper with the film strips when we were little, you know? I'll beep when you can go. So first of all, our broad takeaway is from K2 for our Acadience screener. We have a little bit more data to show you today, just on one slide. We do assess grade 3 at
We do assess grade 3 at, with Acadiance and with iReady, but we usually only report out on iReady because it's a little bit of overkill. But I do have one Acadiance slide to show you for grade 3 that shows that we're continuing through the COVID recovery prayers and hopes that we had. When we're looking at how things are shaking out by the end of the year for Acadiance, you'll see that over 75% of our second and third graders are at or above grade level, even with the really tricky benchmarks at the end that move. Remember, those are moving benchmarks. And 84% of our kindergarteners. So we'll look at the data longitudinally and then within just beginning and end of year of the same cohorts who are in our buildings right now. So this is the slide that I was previewing for you. I did include. But those tests are very different on DIBELS year-to-year and even beginning, middle, to end because the subtests change and it's a moving target. So, but at least it shows you we're moving in the right direction. Oops, I'm breaking this. Or is that you? Okay. Okay. And I apologize, I should say end of year. That looks like it's middle of year. I promise it's the end. When we look at this data and our little Zoom screen is on top there, but I can read it to you. It's a big surprise, not really. Thank you. Sure, so that's our, that's looking at kindergarteners are longitudinal data that we have starting in 2021. Again, that infamous year till now. So that's just the kindergarteners of every year that we're looking at. And we see some, you know, inching up in growth. And I'm very happy with those scores. I don't know that I can promise you an 85 next year. So this would be great. And if we look at the next slide, please, Sheri. Oh, okay, sorry. Oh, we skipped two, sorry. So grade 1, there, nope, there we did kindergarten up to 1. If we look at grade 1, and I also put the N's in there because I do think that's worth noting, especially as we get into the cohort data and how that changes. But grade 1 is pretty much, pretty much the same performance they're adding. I know, it's not because I'm the English director that sometimes they add up to 100, sometimes 101, sometimes 99. It's because when they round up or round down in the, in the generated graph, it doesn't always come out to 100%. So we're looking at tracking about the same as last year for grade 1. And then grade 2. There is a little bit of a dip. Again, the N is interesting when we have 17 more students. And this would be comparing that end-of-year benchmark across all those four years. And the reason that first score looks really different if we didn't have all four schools calculated, that's why that N is so far off too. But I, I think that, we'll talk a little bit more about what we're seeing with grade 2 when we actually look at the cohort. Because if we looked back a slide, you don't have to do that, but I promise it's real. Their end-of-year data for last time for that cohort was 77%. So we like to think about not only year-to-year, but also looking at how the cohort is performing. So that, that's worth taking into account. Okay, thanks, Sheri. This is just a reminder, we won't go through all these, but I do think it's helpful to remember that at the different points of the year, we're looking at very different subtests. So it's really not an apples-to-apples moment ever when you're looking at DIBELS. So with that in mind, we'll look at our kindergarteners at the beginning of the year to the end of the year. I think those sidebars show a nice, you know, the leap we have to get to, to score in the blue from 38 to 152 at the end of the year. And that our kindergarteners, regardless of that, are, have moved along to 84%, 16%. And we like to see that red getting smaller, of course, that to or more grade levels below. Next one, please. And again, grade 1. This is what, you know, how things are broken down for all three parts and very different subtests to calculate that overall score. We'll look at 1. And we're looking at, you know, 6%. Again, we'll say growth, but everything's moving, so. But moving in a good direction, so we'll take it. And again, clarity on what students have to be doing on the two sides in order too. So our averages remain in the blue for all beginning, middle, and end, even though our target is moving. Here we go in grade 2. This becomes a little bit more important for context when we're looking at the beginning of the year, this subtest, the nonsense word fluency. Almost all the kiddos at the beginning of the year are hitting that right off, so that boosts our scores. And then at the end, that's not even counted. They're just looking at oral reading fluency and a retail inaccuracy. So it's a really different test. We can look at 2. And we see 82% down to 78%, largely for the reasons I just relayed. But also, we do like to see that red getting smaller, which is always something that we're most concerned about. And I think that it's also worthwhile to note that one of the things, when Katie alluded to the K2 work that we continue to do, the structured literacy pathway that the K2 inter-reading follows is a different phonics scope and sequence than the teachers were accustomed to working with. And there've been hurdles and we have some really, we have a fabulous reading team and also excellent teachers who know that we might need to move a little bit of skills around to make for a better scope and sequence for what we know we need our students to have. So I'm pleased with this data overall, especially in light of the fact that it's our first year through the reading program. I think it looks good. When we look at iReady, again, now where we don't have as many years. This is just our second real year with iReady. We had a little bit of a pilot before in ELA. We're going to see some really nice growth. We'll see that in grade 3, we had 66% at or above grade level at the end of the year. And we can compare these numbers more directly because it is a fixed target. And then 60 to 85 for grade 4, 63 to 85 in grade 5. You will also see that all three grade levels well exceeded the expectations for typical annual growth. And that's also true in the special education cohorts. So we were really happy with those results. This is how we're looking as a group in grade 3, 4, and 5 as far as our progress toward annual growth, when you want to by the end of the year be hitting 100% for that median progress. And obviously, we've well exceeded that with 193 compared to 171 last year in grade 3, 165 compared to 157, and 200% in grade 5 compared to 180 last year. When we look at our special education cohorts, we also see some really nice growth. We had 165 in grade 3 compared to 158 last year, 206 in grade 4 compared to 162 last year, and 156 as compared to 112 last year in grade 5 for the special education cohorts and their progress toward annual growth as a group. Okay, when we, the name of the game in iReady, as always, less red, more green. And we're seeing that really play out nicely here in all three grade levels. And we can look next at how that works also with, this is our special education students. Again, I added the cohort number, the N for students because I think that is a helpful thing to think about when you're looking at percentages, right? And if a percentage, big difference between a percentage being of, you know, that if we're looking at 10% being 30 students versus 10% being 4. So that's also moving in the direction that we'd like to see it go, of course. And we can look a little bit more at the next, at the domains, how those are playing out. I thought it was interesting, one of the takeaways that I am seeing this year is we're finally gaining on informational text, our nemesis. And I think that we see that play out a little bit, especially here. We're at a dead heat at 88 and 88. And I like to think a logical conclusion for that finding. It isn't true across the board, but certainly that gap is narrowing and even tightening up in places. Is the new reading program exposing students to more informational text than they typically would have maybe had time for or the journeys had included. Our students with disabilities and their growth in all of the domains. And they actually up by a nudge in informational text over literature or fiction. Grade 4, same direction, much less red, much more green. This is interesting, that spread, not to perseverate on this, but it is a data point that's interesting to me because I've been watching it for a long time. At the beginning of the year, when we look at, you know, the 85 to 78% growth that we have in our regular ed students. And if we look at our special ed students, Sheri on the next slide. We actually see that much tighter than that nine-point spread. So that was interesting to me, too. Finally, for grade 5, we also see what we'd hope and expect to see in terms of growth. And again, that's pretty close too to me, 87 to 83% when we look at those two types of literature in that grade level. And in grade 5 special ed, fiction is winning, but that's okay. We'll give fiction a win on one slide. And that's just fine, too. But that, that's where we're looking at, you know, pulling up. And I see, it's a little hard for me to see under there, but our, in our special ed domain, if we're looking at going from 46 to, is it maybe 26? If I'm looking at informational text at the bottom. That is, you know, we, we look at percentages and we can say, okay, that maybe isn't my favorite percent to see. But if we're looking at that, some of those N's, when I'm still seeing in the red 30% in informational text, right? Which was my highest N for those students. Obviously, something that we have in mind as a focus area. We're certainly looking at that data from their transition to 5th to 6th grade when we're making decisions about students who are already on IEPs versus students who need to be placed into Tier 2 support to continue to work on that comprehension. But we also look at, there's 46 in that group. So a quarter of those students, 11 and a half students, can't have half the students. But if we're looking at, when we're looking at a quarter of that cohort and maybe three or four in each school and one student in each classroom who's performing before grade level, I think that's still something we want to focus on and make better. But I do think that's where the N's matter because when you start to think about what that 25 or 30% means in terms of numbers, it's different. And where we have a much larger special education cohort for right now in the 4th grade, that becomes a different sort of breakdown, too. I think that one, N is 70. I think that is all the ELA news that's fit to print for this time.
Any questions? Thank you.
Sure.
Do you like to say questions on ELA now or wait until the end?
Yeah, I think now, yeah. Any questions? Nothing, Tim?
I really want a question.
Tim, you're letting me down, Tim. I was like, I wonder what he'll throw at me tonight.
Right. I think any questions that I have are more like bird's eye view and would be too gotcha for a.
I appreciate, I appreciate that filter.
I'll hold them.
Okay, thanks.
Maybe, Mary, if you could summarize what you think are some next steps for next year, given the data that, your initial review of the data so far.
Sure. So I think the biggest one that we've talked about, you know, the gains that we're seeing in 3, 4, 5. And, and the assessment for iReady is very different. You know, we're focusing on comp and vocab, so it's, it's a different tease-out. But I do think the biggest thing as far as what we're drilling down into as a reading team is that structured literacy path. To use this summer to take that feedback that we got from the teachers when we met with them in May and their grade level teams. And they had all kept some really helpful, careful notes in their own data, on their own classes as we moved through. And then the reading team will be taking that feedback and adjusting the scope, the pacing guides accordingly. So we're, that, that's a very logical, to me, anyway, first step after a first year through a program because you don't know what you don't know until you've lived with it for a year. So that's where we are right now.
These numbers are fantastic.
Yeah, I think they're good, too.
Special ed numbers, I think are really, I think, would be very comforting to a lot of parents would be able to see these numbers and how much progress is being made in the schools.
Thank you. Yeah, they have been, the reading team and all the teachers. This was, it was a massive lift and they did a phenomenal job, so I'm really grateful to them. And I appreciate that, that feedback because they've been really trying.
Yeah, I was going to say, with the new, with the new reading program, I mean, these results are great.
Thanks, thank you.
So kudos to the team. This is really good work.
Thank you. I appreciate the shout-out to them. I know Katie O is on, she's one of our star reading specialists, so yay Katie and team. But yes, I think that I knock on whatever this is laminate. I think we're in good shape and my work here is done. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mary. One more thing, maybe, so you can share what you think the impact of the PLCs were at the elementary for like all of this reading growth and the implementation.
I think that that was huge. Everything before this year was catch, just catch. You're in the hallway, hey, how about this, blah, blah, blah. And now there's dedicated time, not only to discuss what's happening in terms of phonics and fluency and the assessments that we see here, but also dedicated writing PLC time, which has been huge for the cross-curricular efforts that Monica Matthews has made in those inroads with making sure that there's consistent practice with all different modes of writing and that, that it looks, that everybody's using that writing block in a consistent way. And I don't know how we would have ensured that the kid writing program that Dr. Adams introduced us for K, that Monique was able to make that lift too in a really effective way and into 1 because of those PLC times. Because you just can't, you just can't do it with authenticity if you're just kind of emailing each other, hey, try this. And it really made for, it was essential to the smoothness of the rollout, for sure.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Since Mrs. Andrews took up my allotted time. Thank you and good night. Interestingly enough, my next step's around PLCs as well because I can't say enough great things about the work we found there as well. If we could go back to the interpretation slide. So I'll start with the interpretations and then kind of focus in on the slides that I think are important. As Mary kind of talked about with iReady growth, and you guys have seen over and over again for the last two years, again, growing green, diminishing red is what we're looking for at the end of the year. And generally speaking, that is what our data is doing. And we're seeing it for regular ed and for special ed. Again, vastly exceeding expectations for typical annual growth from K through 6. Again, a range from 100 to 162 for all students. And then when we narrow in on special ed, a range from 108 to 145 with the exception of kindergarten, which was 88. But again, I'm pleased with that growth, very pleased with that growth. And again, significant growth in the honor above grade level categories for everybody and significant decreases, again, in the red for students that are two grades behind. And in particular, this number, I didn't have last year's numbers up here, but I know that for students, for special education students, the, we started with more students that were two, last year. We had more students that were two years behind and didn't get quite as far ahead at the end. I'm sorry, we started with less and didn't get as far by the end of the year. This year, we've started with more students that were two or grade levels below and actually made it further growth and progress with all of our students. So I thought that was a nice little item to kind of highlight. Numbers and operations, algebraic thinking still growing faster than the measurement and data and the geometry domains, again, because the program focuses on those first. And all programs focus on those things first. We have some concerns about test fatigue, especially in 5th grade. There's just a lot to do and all of the MCAS come first and they have science as well. And then the ELA iReady comes before the math iReady as well. And kids are pretty tired, but again, the numbers are great and exceptional. So maybe, you know, as much as they may be tired, they're still doing really well. And then one of my bullet points didn't actually make it to that, but I think our, our big point of concern, and I'll get to it when we get there, is our 6th grade, we had our movement from students that were two grade levels below from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. We went from 7% to 5%, which isn't a big move. And then when you narrow in on our special ed cohort, we went from 33% to 26%. So again, not a big move, especially sort of juxtaposed to the growth of that special ed, the special ed cohorts K through 5, where the movement could have been 20, 30 percentage points. So we have a, that'll be. So we have a, that'll be sort of part of my next steps. Again, as we look at our growth, our growth is fantastic for the year. Again, a hundred percent is our goal and we're far exceeding that. You can go to the, sort of move through, sort of quickly through the first couple of slides, we'll see again, green's growing, red's diminishing, the green is growing, the red is diminishing. If you can stop on the next one, Sheri, for, and then the next one is sort of, we sort of get into our domain comparisons, and again, this is where we're seeing numbers and operations and algebraic thinking would grow typically a little bit faster than the measurement and the geometry domains. And so you can kind of click your way through. I assume you guys can kind of see and understand, and if it's in your packet and you've already seen it, you kind of know how that's going to play out. And I unfortunately have the slides numbered, so I'll just keep kind of going. And then we jump into sixth grade. So again, this is where we're kind of talking, the beginning of year placement from seven percent to five percent. We would have hoped maybe a little bit more growth there. And on to the next slide. But our overall growth in sixth grade was a hundred and sixty-two, our highest of all the grades. So again, some really good things happening in sixth grade and I think we need to narrow our focus. Then we look at our special education slides, and I think this is one of the slides I really love the most, where we see, you know, our comparison of our special education students to our students overall. And again, some grades were higher, some grades were lower, but more or less, we are in the same range for everybody. And again, some fantastic growth. So I get very pleased with that data and it's an important slide to kind of point out. As we, if you notice, the special education data looks a little bit different just in terms of the labeling, fall and spring. It's just, we had to, actually, doesn't even matter. You don't, you don't need to know. It's fall and spring. And so, anyway, similar, we're seeing the special education growth moving and moving. And then we get to sixth grade, this is the point that I highlighted definitely for moving forward where we would have hoped to have seen more growth for sure. And again, compared to the grade levels beforehand, we've definitely seen that growth. So that's sort of part of our next steps. And so, moving forward, you know, I know we have a large cohort of students in specialized math education in grade six this year, fourteen students. That's massive size compared to what we've typically had. I'm not saying it's that group either, it could be anyone, right? So I don't want to say that, but it's something I need to look into. And is that a curriculum thing? Is it, do we need more support with that group? Or, you know, so that's definitely a major next step to not just, two things. One, think about the sixth-grade teachers and the curriculum that was there this year, but also to make sure we're doing what we need to for that group as they move forward into seventh grade as well, keeping an eye on them and, you know, trying to support them as they're moving forward. So that's sort of a, definitely, if I took anything, one thing from here, it would be that. And then I think, you know, sometimes you kind of forget, this is, so this is, I think we've been at this for like five years, trying to get something in place. We have multiple pilots through STAR and NWEA, and we finally landed here. And then we've been into two years of this, and one of the major goals is actually just settle a little bit and continue to build capacity. And sometimes that's okay, right? We don't need to be like, you know, everybody has really done a fantastic job, and I think Mary would attest to this, too, the elementary teachers are taking this on, trying to understand the data, trying to really do the program with fidelity. And that's been a big build over the last couple of years, but there are a bunch of other little components that teachers are now starting to really read the data. The PLC piece is great for that because they're sitting down with a specialist and they're sort of getting a targeted look at the data. They're able to think about, well, if your students are here, you know, let's try to preview material and get ahead of problems before they happen as opposed to reacting to an issue like, oh, yes, we knew that student was going to struggle because they had a gap. Are there things we can be doing in our math workshop models to sort of help head off some of the issues that a student may have before they actually come to a new topic in class? So the PLC models have been fantastic for that. I think it's also helped the teachers take a little bit more ownership of it in a way that's fact-based. And you're like, oh, this is, these are my students, this is their data. It's not me, it's not them, let's just, we all want the students to do better, let's just find a solution and find ways to kind of move forward. And I think that's one of the best things that's probably coming out of that, too. It's really great work. I cannot say enough good things about it, so. And then a couple of little things, we've started, towards the second half of the year, we started using the iReady growth monitoring feature for our tier-two and tier-three students to just sort of try and get another look in between these big diagnostics to see how their growth is moving along. We're still trying to understand that, but that's a newer part and sort of a newer development that we weren't doing last year. And so we'll be continuing on with that part. And then some of our teachers have started to explore, there's a standards mastery portion of this as well, that teachers can sort of pull out an assessment on a specific standard. And maybe it's a standard that a student had been struggling for a while, they've been in tier-two, maybe the interventionist comes in, they're doing great. I think, you know, I think they've actually figured out whatever, adding fractions. And so the teacher can go in, pull an assessment that is specific to that, give it to the student, kind of get their own feedback as well. That I think is something that we're starting to explore as well, but there's a lot in that iReady program, so we're branching out there. So those are some of our next steps for moving forward. Questions?
When you're talking about the grade-six cohort with the special, special education, has that cohort, and I think you referenced it was a larger cohort, was, has that always been a large cohort when they were in fifth grade? Was it, or has the numbers increased dramatically? Or I don't know if that has any impact on it, or?
The number in, I, how can I answer that accurately? I would say that, from my knowledge, I know that the class itself added many more students this year. I think it started.
Based on percentages, so it probably wouldn't make a difference if they didn't know.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it started at six to start the year, or five or six. And it's at fourteen to end the school year. However, some students also are moving out of that, back into general education next year, too. So as always is the case with special ed, that's the goal.
Thank you.
Carrie, your?
Okay, so for that cohort, not just special ed, but the grade-six cohort that is a little more concerning.
Yep.
You're going to lose the data gathering things that go with iReady next year? How are you going to keep an eye on, on them and make sure that they're supported?
We will have iReady in sixth grade still next year.
Oh, for, no, for the seventh graders? The ones moving from sixth to seventh grade?
Yes, 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 yes.
Oh, you.
We will have it for them.
Oh, great, okay.
Yep.
Oh, that's awesome, that's great, thank you.
Sort of my evergreen question for Mary is that, looking at informational texts with ELA, starting with, how do you use the social studies department to supplement that, which is rich with informational text? So I should, really should have asked it tonight with Andy in the room. But sort of a similar question for you is that, looking at sort of the domains that, I don't want to say struggling with because we're doing fantastic, but struggling is the wrong word, but maybe doing less fantastic.
Thank you, I appreciate that framing.
But maybe, are there opportunities to use sort of some of the STEM and science curriculum to sort of, certainly with measurement and data that's, you know, they're doing that already?
And that's something Michelle and I have kind of been starting to talk about a little bit. We need to start thinking a little bit, and you're a hundred percent correct. And sometimes there are spaces, things like, a good concrete example was that scientific notation sort of got lost in the shuffle in the last few years, and it was a math standard and then they took it out. And then science was the only people teaching it, but then they took it out of their, you know, and so all of a sudden it was lost. And so, yes and no. I think sometimes MCAS can be a little bit more helpful in the specifics of what gets lost there. Sometimes you really have to, what's tricky is with this, you don't always know what they're asking. And so you don't know if it's, oh, well, yes, they can measure to a quarter, an inch, half an inch, quarter of an inch, this specifically asked for an eighth of an inch, and maybe that's the issue. Or maybe it was they were asked to measure in a different unit, millimeters, and they're not ready for that.
Right.
So I'm, it's a good question.
It seems like sort of the, one of the downsides of having all the MTSS data is, does this add to the siloing where ELA has ELA problems and ELA data and math has, where the certainly, I mean, science is reading informational text and, you know, social studies does data and, you know?
Well, I mean, I think the ELA problems, we've all, I think we've always said this, the ELA problems permeate everything else.
Yeah.
And if you have difficulty reading, you're going to have difficulty doing.
No pressure, Mary.
Math. All the math scores are on ELA. But it's true, you know, I mean, that's very, very common, that students who struggle with reading will struggle with mathematics, especially as you're starting to get into problem-solving and there are aspects, it's that interpretation piece, and you have to read mathematics differently as well, right? And it's a whole thing. So some skills they learn in ELA don't always apply.
Right.
And so sometimes it's the other skills about perseverance and highlighting and finding your topic and going back, right? So I'm not sure that I have an excellent answer for you, but it's an excellent question.
And another question, you talked about test fatigue, and I kind of wanted to poke at that a little bit. I know the kids are still doing really well on the math, so maybe the data doesn't show test fatigue, but I'm wondering, sort of, we have, on the ongoing sort of social, emotional learning conversation we've been having, are you, I just, are we doing too many tests in your opinion? Is it, is this affecting other areas of the kids' lives that, or is this sort of, do the kids see the iReady tests as being sort of low-pressure tests?
I don't think they see it as low-pressure because the vast majority of our students are very proud of their work.
Good.
And so, unfortunately and unfortunately, right? I mean, as much as we can say, because one of the things with iReady, especially with math, you know, we try to say, if you don't know something after sixty, ninety seconds and you really don't know it, take a guess and move on. Because it's, you know, the option of, I don't know, right? Because again, the test is eventually asking you harder and harder questions and it's pushing you to a place you don't know. And so what becomes complicated there is our students really want to do well. And so they could sit there and just keep, and they're working, they're not just staring at, you know, they're working, 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 trying to do their best. And so that, I wish we could just say, and we try, well, we try, you know, do your best within reason. But a lot of kids really kind of dig in and stay at it longer than I think sometimes we wish they would. Which then turns into a little bit of a fatigue thing because a student who should be done in a period and a half or two periods at most is stretching into three or four sometimes. And that is, it just becomes a lot. And curriculum-wise, you know, the middle school where we were, a lot of the teachers were middle of the year, at least a week and a half behind where they were last year just because of time.
Yeah.
And so we'll have to weigh that out, right? But I can't emphasize enough how important it is also to have this data and to intervene. And again, we know, we've always known who our students are who are struggling, we have common assessments, we've always used our common assessments. So I'm not necessarily sure that it's pulling, you know, pulling an entirely different group, but it's giving us information, more information about we know, what we know about the students and where they're struggling. It's more easily shared information across teachers, interventionists, special education, rather than they've got a sixty on this test, go help them out. And the teacher might know what was on that test, but then the special ed teacher has to figure out. So in that regard, it's more easy to share, which then also allows us more opportunities to address wherever they're struggling. And obviously, the MyPath learning that goes with it clearly is addressing that in a way that is much easier and much more efficient than we could address it elsewhere.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think one of the important things, too, to understand about iReady, it's adaptive. So if a student is struggling on something, it'll go down a little further, so it becomes diagnostic, so it's giving you information on specifically what the struggles are. In addition to, if a student's doing really well, it'll push them a little further, so you're getting a real sense, different than MCAS that it's sort of criterion-based, standards-based. This is adaptive to the student, so it's a real opportunity to differentiate and individualize instruction based upon an individual plan for what the student needs. And math is tricky because if a student misses foundational skills, we keep adding more on top of that, but they are missing some foundation. For example, place value is a very important benchmark in the early grades. If they don't get a place value, they're going to struggle with consequent standards on top of that. And then the next big benchmark is fractions and equivalency. If they don't understand fractions and equivalency, and then we plug decimals and addition and subtraction of fractions, mixed numbers, and all on top of that, if they don't understand equivalency and fractional thinking, you keep adding all these things on top of that and that we need the information about what are the areas, the foundational skills. And this is one assessment, and there are others that could dig in even further for students who are struggling. And that might be also a next step is when students are really struggling with foundational skills, how do we get feedback? Or what are the right interventions to support students? Because there's usually two things, place value and then fractions, right? It's like a big, and most of the kids in sixth grade who might be struggling, a large portion are probably struggling with fractions and fractional thinking. And then we've added decimals on top of that, which is, which are just fancy fractions, right? So, and then it, we keep adding more and more on top of that and start to think about algebra on top of that, which needs fractions and decimals as well, so.
Sort of if people are wondering why we need three sets of data for every year so we can have those interventions come quickly so that, you know, you can overcome those things that will stop you from moving ahead later on in the curriculum.
Is the program factor in response time?
Yeah, it gives you some feedback on if the kids have rushed. And I think we had no rushers, we had some email.
Yeah.
A little bit, but actually, we reset. So that's what teachers now know, if a student finishes real quick and they get the flag, they now know how to go in. They used to have to reach out to me, how do we reset it there, you know, so they're building their capacity, too. They sit down with the student right away and say, you went too fast, you obviously just want to be done, let's think about doing your best. And then next thing you know, Tim, they're going slow and taking two or three, but that's okay. But, but yes, that rushing is going down, too, and well-articulated.
Thank you, David.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, so we are on to seven point three to receive an update on year one of the World Language Program Review. We've got Erica Pollard.
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
So this year was the first year of our two-year program review cycle, which started with bringing together a team of educators to work on this project with me. I would like to thank them for volunteering their time. We have Laura Malerby, Maria Zaid, Justin Minahan, Danielle Grafton, Chandler Phillips, Karen Shaw, and Zach Bagan, who are all at the high school, Chelsea Evangel, who is the Spanish teacher at Foster, and Christina Horegui, who is the teacher at East. So I got a lot of, a lot of good participation for this project. The goal of year one is a self-study, and we spent a lot of our time focused on essential questions. What are the questions that we want to answer about our own department and our own work so that we can, in year two, develop an action plan to improve our programming? So we developed the following essential questions. To what extent is our curriculum aligned with the Massachusetts World Language Curriculum Frameworks? They were updated in 2021 for the first time since nineteen ninety-nine, so that's a big, big adjustment for us to make. How do we create more opportunities for all teachers who teach a particular language to align, collaborate, and reflect on their curriculum? How do we ensure that there is an appropriate course and an appropriate pathway for every student? What are best practices in world language teaching and how effectively are we making use of them in our department? And is our curriculum aligned both vertically and horizontally? As part of the beginning of this process, we conducted a number of site visits this year to Milton, Holliston, Mendon Upton, and to Maynard, largely focusing on elementary programs in those places. And in the coming year, we're hoping to look at, to visit some middle school and high school programs, as well as invite people from other districts to come and view our program and give us feedback. At the end of that process, we will write a summary report and an action plan, so stay tuned. I'll see you in about a year.
Thank you so much.
Unless you have questions, in which case I'll answer them.
Any questions?
I was going to say with the ninety-four students with the seal of illiteracy, it might have just been the right.
I will comment that.
A little bit of a mic drop.
I will prepare a full report on the seal of illiteracy, but Dave and Mary both talked about data and the power of having that data to really improve instruction. And for the last two years, we've received grant funding from DESI to expand our testing last two years, we've received grant funding from DESI to expand our testing of student proficiency, which has really allowed us to dial in on areas that we could focus on for improvement for kids, and I think has really yielded some great results.
Interesting.
Thank you.
And while we're speaking about interdisciplinary issues, I know my friend Erica once told me that the, being proficient in a language, in L2, your second language, improves your first language and improves ELA skills, so.
And there's a lot of, we talk about reading, literature, and informational texts, they're doing those things in world language classes as well, as well as learning about all kinds of great social studies stuff, maybe not as much math, maybe we should work on that, but there's definitely a lot of cross-disciplinary stuff happening. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So to receive a report on social studies program review and act as appropriate.
Finally, the good part of the meeting. Well, good evening, everyone. I am very proud to be the social studies director here in Hingham and pleased to share our program review. So you just heard year one from Ms. Pollard and the World Language Department. I was here about this time last year doing the same kind of little year-one update. I think I described it as the sixty-second teaser trailer and said I'd be back in the spring for the main theatrical event, so here we are. I'm sure you've been on the edge of your seats since, so. Well, now what? Say what?
Is it updated?
She might have clicked in when she went to present, she might have clicked on the PDF.
The PDF.
Instead of the, or the PowerPoint?
Yeah.
I didn't see it.
That's all right.
Not the, no, just the report.
Why don't you turn the projector on now?
We don't, the projector, no.
The projector.
Now we're really on the edge of our seats.
Sure.
Okay. All right, we're gonna move to the next item on the agenda while we wait for the projector to be fixed. So item seven point five is to receive recommendation naming of the Foster Elementary School Library and act as appropriate. I'll turn over the docs.
So this is a request from the Foster community to name the library after Camilla Roundtree. Mr. Scheifli shared the information and got feedback from his school site council as well as his PTO, and I think he reports that everyone unanimously was in support. As you know, Camilla Roundtree was the mother, the grandmother of the Metco program here in Hingham, and I think it would be a great honor to her legacy to have, in the new school, the library named after her. So the motion is to have you approve the naming of the library after Camilla Roundtree.
I, I just wanna add, I read a statement after she passed away at the select board meeting, so I thought I'd just share that quickly. Camilla Roundtree was involved in the Metco program here in Hingham, and was seen as caretaker and mentor for so many Metco students during her time. She had retired from Hingham Public Schools by the time I joined the school committee, but I was fortunate enough to meet her and talk with her often as she was on her daily walks past my house. I was not surprised to learn that the friendly, positive, energetic walker was the same person that many were so fond of as the Metco director. She worked in the Metco program for over forty years. When the program started in nineteen sixty-seven, there was no school bus. Mrs. Roundtree would use her family vehicle to pick up and drop off students from Boston to Hingham. In addition to her duties as a Metco director, Mrs. Roundtree was also a mentor, advocate, Girl Scout leader, and food bank volunteer. She was honored as the Hingham Citizen of the Year in two thousand and three and was recognized by the Massachusetts House of Representatives in two thousand and twelve for her outstanding service to the Hingham Metco program. Tears to my eyes. One of the things that she would do when, when I saw her walking, she would sometimes clean the streets, like she was just, she was amazing. So I was very excited when they presented this at the Foster Council meeting.
Yes. I will make a motion to name the Foster library in honor of one of Hingham's finest, Camilla Roundtree.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, so.
Ready thing? Seems to be.
You got to follow Camilla Roundtree, I'm sorry, Andy.
I know, I know. You follow that. Hey, I love, I love historical naming, so that's, that's great. All right, so we just heard year one, so I won't spend too much time on this, but just to remind you all that this is now a new program review process, even though it's a longstanding practice in the Hingham schools to formally evaluate our curriculum and programs. The last time I did this in the old format was in twenty seventeen, and so we now have this multi-year process, which, as you might recall, from last year, we were on year one last year, we are now in year two, where we've developed our report and action plan. And so we, when I was talking to you in the, at this time last year, the plan was, or still is, to present both social studies and business. I think last year, I called the business department small but mighty, and it's small but mighty and it's important, right? So rather than try to blend them into this presentation and talking with Katie Roberts, I'll come back to you in the early fall, I do wanna present the business department kind of as its own standalone department, which it is, and give them their rightful place in the sun, so I'll be back for that part in the fall. Also, as I said last year, you know, we are very proud of our social studies program here in Hingham, and at the same time, we're always striving to make enhancements and improvements, and so we've really embraced this new process. You know, we are kind of the guinea pigs in going through this multi-year process the first time. It's much more robust, it is much more action-oriented, it's really almost like a mini Niask, for those of you that are familiar with that, just for your department. So as much as my instinct is to talk with you for two hours about, about our department and celebrate it and talk about how excited we are about the work ahead, I know my task is to do so in about twenty minutes, so I will try to be as action-oriented myself as possible. I will also refer everyone back to our twenty seventeen program review. We put together a video that Harvard Media helped us do to really show what social studies looks like in the Hingham schools in the twenty-first century, so if you are so inclined, you're welcome to go back and look at that from twenty seventeen, it's still posted on our department webpage. So again, you know, the, the two years, we're now into the written report, the recommendations, and this presentation to you. As Erica said, we put together a team, we're well-represented, K to twelve, I really wanna thank all of them, not only the folks that are listed here for their thoughtful and engaged participation in this, but my entire secondary social studies department, six, twelve as well. We kept them, you know, notified, and as we were going through the process, they provided feedback along the way, so I really wanna thank all of them for their, for their work on this. So as Erica said, we develop essential questions, and you might remember last year, all of our questions are to what extent questions, we love those in social studies, they're not simple yes or no answers, they're open-ended, they're analytical, and they really served us well to guide us in this, in this program review process. Again, to recap what we did last year, we actually did our site visits in anticipation of the twenty twenty-one program review before the pandemic, got a lot of good data from that, we started doing our own deep dive into our own data and documents and artifacts last year, we continued that this year, and we also developed and administered stakeholder surveys, that was included the staff back in the spring of last year, and then we also surveyed students, three cohorts of students in the fall. We had the current seniors reflect back, especially on their high school social studies experience, but really, you know, everything, they had the full hindsight of K to twelve. We surveyed our current ninth graders right at the beginning of this year and asked them to reflect back on middle school social studies, and we surveyed our current sixth graders at the beginning of this year, asking them to reflect back on K-five social studies. That was extremely valuable and helpful to us, as was our family data, we also surveyed them at the same time in the fall of twenty twenty-three. You mentioned, heard Erica mention this, this was an extremely valuable and frankly validating step in this process to have a visiting team of educators, social studies educators and elementary educators from around the South Shore, came to the Hingham schools on December fifth of twenty twenty-three, they visited South Elementary School, Hingham Middle School, and Hingham High School, we broke them up into three kind of mini teams, they visited classrooms, they spoke with teachers, and it was really, really helpful for them to kind of corroborate a lot of what we had seen internally and also give us some new things to think about as well. Okay? So as far as the overview of kind of what our curriculum looks like, I wanna just give you a little bit of background before we get into each of the six essential questions. So our curriculum is driven by DESI standards that contain three pillars. They contain content standards, skill standards, and literacy standards. And so what I really wanna communicate to you is that the job of a social studies teacher today, especially in Massachusetts, is very challenging, right? It's enjoyable, we love the work, it's important work, but it's challenging, right? There are many demands to do all of these things kind of simultaneously, which makes sense. If you're doing history well, you're not just learning facts, you're also writing, you're also communicating, you're thinking, you're analyzing, and so all three of these things go hand in hand. I think the last time I presented in twenty seventeen, I made the bold claim that social studies is kind of the unsung hero of public education. We don't have MCAS, we don't have as much attention paid to it as some of the other disciplines, but, you know, when you're talking about a discipline that is so closely tied to the mission of public schools in general, in terms of, you know, inculcating, you know, the skills in, in citizens needed for a democratic society, I think, I think we are where it's at, if I, if I may be so, so bold to say it again. Here's a graphic from the Department of Ed that, again, kind of just reaffirms that all three of these things are happening at the same time. We're thinking and analyzing history, we're, and kind of gone are the days when you, you know, think about your history classes, maybe of your youth and my youth, it was a lot of lecturing and it was a lot of like multiple choice and fill-in-the-blank tests, and that was kind of it, right? And we've gone far beyond that today. Here are the seven, what are called the History and Social Science Practice Standards, these are our seven key skills, these are actually the same K to twelve, obviously they'll look different for a kindergartner than they do for a twelfth grader, but as you scan these, notice that they are really focused on developing citizens who have the ability to think and analyze information critically, use evidence to defend their claims, and communicate it effectively. So we are doing all of those things while working on literacy skills, informational text skills, as you pointed out, Tim, is absolutely our bread and butter. But wait, there's more. DESI has also given us some additional content standards in financial literacy, in news media literacy. There's also the expectation in the guiding principles of the framework document that really we're always kind of talking about current events all the time, and frequently the social studies teachers are the ones to whom students turn in the morning when literally our lesson plan has to change overnight, right, after certain events that happen. In addition to that, we've had in the past several years, two state statutes, one on civic education and one on genocide education. And then finally, as we all know, and you know as public servants, we are living in challenging political and social times, right? And so there's been a lot of, kind of the microscope has been on history education in a way that has become much more challenging over the past several years. So all of this is just kind of background to give you not only what our standards are, but also the many demands that, that we welcome, but are also just a part of the job. So to give you just a sense of what our program looks like, K to five, the elementary social studies program begins kind of at the personal level, it gradually, gradually expands outward, it's more thematic in K to two, and then it becomes much more academic in grades three through five with a really chronological, historical approach in its content standards. At the high school, middle school and high school level, the secondary level, we have kind of an intentional spiraling of world and US history content. We have a two-year sequence of world history one and world history two, followed by US history at the high school, and that, we think, is, is very much aligned with our school and district missions on global education. So with that being said, our first essential question, as we examine that, what we found was that our program is well-aligned to the standards and often exceeds those standards with a strong vertical and horizontal articulation from K to twelve. When these new standards were released in June of twenty eighteen, we immediately started a multi-year plan to update our curriculum and our curriculum documents. Obviously, you can see the red there, lots of COVID delays that kind of threw wrenches into our plans, but we continued forward, and, you know, we are, are fully aligned with the twenty eighteen standards, and that was obviously the first strength that we found. Not only our alignment to, but also kind of our exceeding of, and this was something that not only internally we found, but our external review team noted that everything that they saw was really recognized and tied to a standard. When I talk about exceeding the expectations, you know, what we've tried to do is take what the state gives us and also continue to build on that, and in a lot of cases, keeping sort of the traditionally strong parts of our curriculum and program. So for example, we have woven into our grade six and seven sequence, I think, more current modern-day connections than the state requires. In grade eight civics, we are teaching civics, but we are also still teaching early US history and putting those civic standards in historical context, which we think makes for a stronger curriculum and makes much more sense to the students. When students get to grade nine, we are doing a little bit of review of some of the early world history that they have learned in sixth and seventh grade to, again, kind of build and expand our students' knowledge, so. So we we're very proud of that, that we think we not only meet but exceed the standards. We also fulfill the the state civics mandate with our projects in grade eight and grade 10. Thank you to all of you for supporting those, as I know you get a lot of outreach from students looking to make changes in their community. Genocide Education, Hingham, I'm proud to say, has had a very long standing program, both in in ELA and in social studies, both at the middle and high school levels. We have a very effective vertical and horizontal articulation of our content and skills. That was affirmed both internally and externally. I know this sounds self-serving, but whether it's me or somebody else, the fact that Hingham has a K-12 department director structure is a huge advantage for work like this. And finally, our continued focus on global education with diverse perspectives and cultures. The needs that we found in this first section, while we exceed the standards and are proud of that, we also have a lot of content that we're dealing with, right? And basically, all districts struggle with the the idea that in high school, the state has essentially given us four years of content standards, World One, World Two, US One, US Two, but essentially only three years to teach them in. Unless you want to scrap every elective that you have in grade 12, which no school wants to do, you have to figure out a way to essentially teach four years of content in three years. So that's something we need to continue to always look at and monitor, despite the the myth, history is always changing, there's new content every year, right? There's new content sometimes every day, and it's actually a very dynamic discipline as people continue to interpret the past over time. Another challenge within those, within the the content are where do you fit that high school civics project, right? In eighth grade, the the project is very robust, it's a big part of the eighth grade civics curriculum. At the high school level, to fulfill the state mandate, we have to kind of squeeze that project in somewhere in one of our core courses. We choose to do it in grade 10, but in the absence of a standalone course, that's also challenging. And then another need that we found was to really clarify where those news media literacy standards fit. They come up naturally in a lot of places in social studies, but they also, you know, can come up in other departments and disciplines as well. And so we want to further kind of document that and be very intentional about that. And also to explore our social justice standards, which more recent DESI frameworks integrate those. Ours now, even though it only came out in 2018, does not reference those explicitly, they're sort of implicit, and we could delve into those as well. For the second essential question, what we found as a result of the strong alignment and articulation that I just discussed, our program provides a strong development in student skills, reading and writing, speaking, listening, historical thinking. And that's really because, you know, we go beyond that kind of rote memorization that I was talking about, right? We're we're going beyond that, we're writing, we're analyzing historical content. And we are really proud that the Hingham Social Studies Department doesn't just simply assign writing, we really try to teach writing and assess writing and really partner with our ELA colleagues to give our students more practice in that. And the the data on this was very gratifying to see, you know, students and their families, we had clear majorities, as you saw in the report and all the appendices that I gave you access to, show that, you know, students and their families believe that their social studies classes are making them better readers and writers and communicators and thinkers and collaborators, it's helping with organization and note taking, all of those things. It was very gratifying to see that the students were noticing that as well. We saw effective instruction and assessment of writing, as I talked about, and then all seven of our Hingham High School learning expectations, we think our department does very well with those in terms of reading and writing purposefully and so on. For the needs that we uncovered in this essential question, in the K five level, we would definitely want to develop some common assessments. We have common assessments at the secondary level with common exams and so on. That's an opportunity for us to continue to grow at the elementary level. And for the for the secondary level, we have a lot of, if not identical, a lot of very similar rubrics, but we could continue to make those even more consistent and probably weave that into our upcoming Niasq work at Hingham High School in the next couple of Our third essential question, we found that our program uses a variety of instructional practices that effectively engage students and develop their skills and content knowledge. Again, the the data here was was very gratifying. We saw a lot of instructional and assessment practices. We saw that internally, our visiting team noted that as well. We saw a lot of good historical thinking skills. And our, again, our data from from students, 71% of families reported that their social studies classes fostered intellectual curiosity in their children. The students themselves reported that their social studies classes were interesting and engaging and enjoyable. I love this statistic, 76% of families noted that their children, quote, "discussed social studies topics at home." There's, you know, kind of no greater compliment, I think, that than kids are going home excited about what they've learned in their social studies classes. We've seen good growing and integration of technology. Analysis of internal data, this is going to be both a a strength and a growing need because we've just been looking and talking about data all evening. We don't have that level of data, so we've had to really build our own internal capacity. We've been able to do that with our own common assessments, six through 12. And as you saw in the report, we're also excited about being able to use some of these digital data dashboard tools that the leadership team has started to experiment with, and that's going to be a new kind of avenue for us to do some data analysis that we've never been able to do before. We obviously have strong student achievement in a lot of the ways that that we can sort of measure it externally. For us, that's mostly AP scores, but also I think, you know, our discipline can certainly help with the ELA scores as well. And a lot of the engaging social studies enrichment as well. One of the needs that we uncovered here was to try to cultivate additional avenues for student choice. And one of the things that we saw from our data was that students would enjoy the opportunity to study topics in history that really interest them. So if we can look for places where we can kind of open up case studies for kids to maybe look at a specific interest of theirs in support of a greater theme, that's something that the external visiting team noted as well. And then that digital dashboard that I noted as well. We have achievement gaps in the same way that every other discipline does, and we want to be able to use this to kind of target those gaps in our subgroups. Our fourth essential question, what we found here is that we meet the academic and social needs of students, but additional curriculum, instructional materials, and collaboration time could further enhance our ability to do so. So we noted, these first two kind of go together. We noted internally, the external review team noted that there were high academic expectations in all of our courses, no matter the course, no matter the level, and at the same time, a lot of scaffolding and support to help students meet those those high expectations. We have a variety of courses with high student interest and engagement. Even though we have only a three-year high school graduation requirement, on a typical year, 85% or more of our seniors will engage in at least one of our elective courses. And we also, I think, do a good job of promoting social emotional learning, right? The study of social studies, you're inherently doing social emotional learning because you're studying humanity itself, right? That's that's corny, but I think it's true, right? That we're looking and developing at developing dialogue and empathy, historical empathy, social awareness, perspective taking with different different points of view, decision making, all of that promotes different aspects of social emotional learning. And then we continue to develop cultural proficiency through windows and mirrors, right? Can our students get a window into another culture, another perspective, but can they also, as a mirror, see themselves reflected in our curriculum? That was something that we really analyzed and broke that down by demographics, which was very interesting and helpful to us. And you saw in the in the report, survey data that we had most students either agreeing or strongly agreeing with that statement, "I was able to see my identity or culture represented in the curriculum." 62% of our sixth graders, 58% of our ninth graders, and then up to 78% of our seniors by the time they were were done with their with their studies. The external visiting team also kind of corroborated that for us. They noted lots of, quote, "windows and mirrors" for students, and the social studies classes were, quote, "beautiful and welcoming in all places." That was such a nice quote, I couldn't resist including that. At the same time, we want to continue to develop that. I think that work is never done, right? Rightfully so. And we want to continue to enhance our curriculum and instructional materials in that in that in that way. Our clear goal is to increase those percentages that I just mentioned, right? For everybody, across all demographics, across all genders. And the appendix that I attached there shows that relatively equal numbers of African American, Asian, and Hispanic students agreed and disagreed with that statement. Indigenous students agreed with the statement overall. Female members were slightly more apt to disagree with that statement, non-binary students kind of varied across the graduating cohort, so that's something we'd like to continue to work on and and try to lift those percentages across the board. We'd like to continue to add text and instructional materials that are accessible to all students. I think that's especially true at the elementary level. You know, the elementary level does not offer as many robust programs and materials for social studies, so we need to continue to kind of build, you know, within. We also want to continue to explore access to college level coursework for all students. That might mean AP courses, that might mean dual enrollment courses. The dual enrollment, I'm actually excited, I can share with you now that we just recently had two social studies courses approved for dual enrollment at Quincy College for next year, our psychology and sociology courses have been approved, as well as two of our business courses. We're going to continue to explore that and build that. We find that a very equitable access for kids, especially because there is not not that sort of high-stakes AP test at the end. And it has been gratifying to see that a lot of our courses, as we've kind of always suspected, are already being deemed college-ready, college-level by Quincy College. So we're excited to continue that as well. And then to try to support our students, it would be great to develop common planning time for our social studies teachers and our special education teachers and paraeducators, which again can be kind of catch as catch can, but it would be very helpful to be able to do that in a more systematic way, especially at the high school level that's not teamed in the way that middle school is. For our fifth question, what we found here is that the our program clearly prepares students with the knowledge, skills, dispositions necessary for life, yet we can further clarify for students and families how we're doing that. Certainly, what we're doing is really in support of the the school and district mission statements in terms of, you know, preparing students for their local and global communities. We found that we are definitely preparing students with these things. Clear majorities of of teachers and families in our survey data agreed that the social studies program prepares students for their roles of citizen. Majorities of our 12th and 9th graders agreed with that statement. 46% of sixth graders in that that realization team seems to increase as the students get older. But we also saw an opportunity for for growth there because we really want to make sure that the kids can make the connection between what they're doing and how that does in fact prepare them for life after high school. Teachers agreed that the program prepares students for the real world. Families agreed that the social studies prepares their children for the next level of schooling or life after high school. However, the percentage of students who agreed that social studies prepares them for the real world ranged from kind of the high 30s to low 40%. And 29% of our families reported that they were unsure or had no basis for evaluation. So I see that as a as a way for us to really kind of message what we're doing and make it very clear to to kids and families. And it's interesting because the survey data showed that the kids know that they're getting better at these skills. They think that their social studies classes are making them, giving them a better understanding of local, national, and world events, and yet that's not really translating to them to realize, oh, that is preparation for the real world. So how do we make that connection more explicit for students and families is something we'd like to continue to work on. And for our sixth and final question about resources, we found that our program boasts mostly updated instructional resources, powerful community partnerships, and highly effective professional staff, with some gaps remaining in some instructional and technology resources, as well as challenges in providing sufficient time for elementary social studies and collaboration or preparation time for the K-12 staff overall. So as far as our updated resources, I'd really like to give a shout out to some of our grants, especially in the in the last recent years, from Hingham Education Foundation, DESE. I think we're now up to our fifth grant that we've been awarded through DESI, and it's great that they've actually put some money towards social studies in the last few years, so that's been very helpful. Our community partnerships are outstanding. I can't emphasize enough what a gift it is to teach history and social studies in such a historic town, and a town that also really values its history and institutionalizes the teaching of history through its, you know, nonprofits and organizations. We are very, very lucky to be able to partner with them. So, you know, we have financial partnerships with the HEF, with PTOs, with the very generous Rabbi Shira Joseph Holocaust Studies Fund that you might recall she set up several years ago, that has led to professional development for our staff. We have programmatic connections with the Historical Society, with the Friends of Old Ship, with our veterans through the Grand Army of the Republic Hall. It's it's really, you know, just a cornucopia of resources here, which in a way that's that's really, really exciting. We have a lot of interdisciplinary opportunities between social studies and ELA and literacy, especially through our K five writing specialists that that Mary mentioned earlier. Monica Matthews has done outstanding work with elementary social studies over the past two years and really fusing those two disciplines together. And then I can't speak highly enough about our effective, our dedicated, our passionate, our literally award-winning staff. You recall last month when I presented June Gustafson with our latest social studies award, and I talked about some of the other many awards that our staff have won over the the past many, many years. I'm just so proud to work alongside them every day and see the the passion and the energy and the expertise and the care and the love that they pour into this job. It is, it's really a special group, and the outside team that came to visit us were really wowed by what they saw, and that was very gratifying. And most importantly, it was really corroborated by the kids. You know, you saw really powerful data there. You know, we had students respond to statements, you know, "my social studies teachers were knowledgeable," or "my social studies teachers were caring." And you saw these, you know, really high percentages of 75 to 96%, depending on the the statement and the age of the kids, agreeing or strongly agreeing with those statements. So that was very gratifying as well to know that the the work we do is appreciated by the kids. At the same time, we uncovered some needs as well. The biggest need we saw at the elementary level was just the amount of time that's left to teach social studies. It's always, you know, it's always a need, especially those more academic grades, three through five, where they really have pretty intense content standards in the in the new framework that they have to teach. Consistent accessible texts, I noted that. We've had a lot of good updates, but as I said, it can be challenging to find accessible texts for social studies. National programs just don't cut it because they're not aligned to Massachusetts standards. So there's a lot of kind of, you know, purchasing of different trade books and and picture books and so on to enhance our curriculum. Equitable technology access, this was a need that came especially from the high school staff. We have, you know, 89% of middle school teachers agreeing or strongly agreeing that they have the necessary technology to teach, and that's obviously a, you know, one-to-one district-owned environment. The percentage drops to 52% at the elementary level. They were really looking for more digital resources that are kind of on par with those available for science. Again, we don't have quite as much available to us in our discipline. And 46% of agreeing for high school social studies teachers who, you know, the BYOD program has has advantages, but it can also have some disadvantages. And that was noted by the the review team as well, that asked, you know, in a BYOD environment, how do you ensure educational and resource equity, and how do you monitor devices for safe use? So that was something that the high school folks really talked about a lot. And then the whole idea of of time and staffing, this was something that that came up a lot in the 2017 program review. I know nobody, none of you were on the committee, but at that time, you know, one of the the kind of sense of the amount of stuff that that teachers were struggling with doing, that did lead to an eventual addition of of another two, 2.0 FTE for high schools. to an eventual addition of another 2.0 FTE for high school social studies. And I think that budget priority reflected kind of what our curriculum was doing and the challenges of teaching social studies effectively, again, going beyond kind of memorization and doing higher-order thinking and open-ended assessments. So we had a good increase in that. It did bring our class averages from kind of the high of just under 22 in FY '18 down to 18.2 in FY '23. It dipped this past year to 16.4 and is now slated to go back up to 19.4 next year with our cut, since we had to cut 2.0 in the FY '25 budget. So that's just something that I and we want to keep, continue to monitor. And, you know, again, the data kind of bears that out. We had significant numbers of teachers at all grade levels disagreeing or strongly disagreeing that they have enough time to collaborate with their colleagues, or that they just feel that they have enough time during the school day to effectively do their job as a teacher. Forty-four percent at the elementary level, 56 at the middle school, 77% at the high school were disagreeing or strongly disagreeing. So that's something I want to continue to monitor. Obviously, there are no easy answers to that. There's budget implications and all of that, but something that we'll have to keep in mind because, you know, essentially, the infrastructure of school hasn't really changed over the decades, right? When you think about it. And yet, we know, and the data is clear, that the demands continue to grow, right? And the student needs continue to grow. So I don't pretend to have answers, other than I just know what the data is telling me. So, I don't know how I'm doing on time, but hopefully I'm going fast enough. So to wrap up our kind of wrap-up statement, overall, we feel, you know, very good about where we are, but we also want to continue to grow, and so we have our action plan, which is the whole point of this. So our first goal was about elementary social studies. I tried to kind of take all the needs and kind of synthesize them into six buckets. Those six buckets don't necessarily align with the six essential questions. You'll notice some crossover. So we did one bucket of kind of elementary goals, and you'll notice a number of action steps here. A lot of this has to do with piloting some new materials. We've been piloting that investigating history curriculum that I told you about at a grant we were awarded last year. We've gotten great feedback on that. DESI is actually piloting, not across the entire state, but they're piloting similar materials for grades 3 and 4. Hingham, we applied and were accepted into the pilot, a very small-scale pilot, just a handful of teachers, that we're excited to try that out next year. And again, as I said, building some common assessments over the years as well. Our secondary social studies goal, to continue to enhance social studies at the secondary level, again, we've got kind of a mix of content of, you know, literacy and news media literacy standards, working on rubrics. That's going to fit into our Niaskin Portrait of the Graduate work, and then that data dashboard to continue to routinely analyze our grade data to try to close achievement gaps in our subgroups. So that all kind of fits into the secondary bucket. Then we did a separate third goal, really focused on that access to college-level work, which again is a high school-specific goal, but wanted to really give it its own goal as well. We'd kind of be doing these two things simultaneously, both doing our own exploration of continuing to look at, you know, college-level courses, not just AP courses, although that's a big part of it, but also dual enrollment courses, and to try to kind of balance, you know, the levels of stress that we hear from students, but also the desire for more college-ready classes or college-level courses. And so we'll continue to look at that. And we really want to survey our kids more on that specifically and kind of hear from them. Our fourth goal, we called student-centered social studies. So that has to do with student choice, that has to do with the diverse perspectives and identities and cultures, those windows and mirrors. Some of that is going to be addressed through continued professional development, some of which we already have lined up, continue to build our texts and our materials. And then, I'd like to, you know, survey the students again in the fall of 2027. Basically, how are we doing, right? Can we continue to see those increases, those percentages go up? That would put us at about halfway through this curriculum review cycle and give us a little bit of a benchmark, right? To see how we're progressing there. For our life-after-high-school goal, this is really focused especially on civic engagement. I'd really like to, as I mentioned, look at maybe some different ways to try to achieve that high school civics project, whether it's in a different place than it currently is now. Do a similar kind of data, kind of midpoint data in the fall of 2027 to see, you know, is our messaging, is our marketing, so to speak, working? Do kids see the transferability of what they're doing translating to the real world? And then, our resources goal has to do with, you know, collaborating with other departments. This is a mix of kind of curriculum, materials, technology, time, you know, working with our special educators, and continuing to monitor our staffing needs. Okay, I probably failed at the goal of 20 minutes. I did my best. I welcome any questions you have, and thank you for your attention and your interest.
Any questions?
Oh, okay. Obviously, this is very close and dear to my heart, as I'm a history teacher myself. Thank you so much for being the volunteer to be the guinea pig and go first. That's not an easy thing to do, so really appreciate the fact that you're up here right now. I think you nailed it, that time is the most valuable resource, that really history is a competition between breadth and depth.
Right, yep.
You know, if you go too much into breadth, then you won't be able to dive down into really build any of these sort of historical thinking skills, the literacy skills, the research skills, the civic skills, all of that, that you really, is the end result. But if you go all into depth, I mean, every single classroom lesson that a history teacher does could be expanded into a semester-long course.
Exactly, yep.
So there's a lot of the pacing that individual teachers have to make for themselves, and I guess it's sort of a softball, but do Hingham students have enough time to do the deep dive into, sort of to step back from the pressure of the schedule and the having to cover four years of content in three years, and to be able to dive down deep into different moments?
Yeah, I mean, I think that they do, and I think that's what our, generally what our kids are telling us, right? At the same time, we always want to try to find ways that we can, like I said, condense. If there's places we can condense, we want to do that, because we're only going to have more history to study as time goes on, right? So yes, I think we really try to find that balance, like you said, Tim, between breadth and depth, right? We try to establish a big-picture theme, and then we look at moments or case studies within that theme, right? And that's what we try to do really in all of our courses. We always have, you know, and you saw one of the appendices, we really make sure that we're always working on the study of primary sources, document-based question writing. There's always at least one formal major research project in all of our classes and all of our levels, grades 6 through 12. You know, the DBQ work is done 6 through 12, right? Not just in AP courses, like in a lot of districts, right? So we're really trying to use those skill-based assignments to also find those places to drill down and go into depth as well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I would just thank you again. I echo what Tim says, and we've had, a number of us have had the opportunity to observe your program with the mock town meeting for the 3rd graders, and then for the Civic Day, and really appreciated that. My question is, so since I've been on the committee, there's been a lot of discussion of whether students on IEPs can access college-level courses, or AP courses specifically. But now with the dual enrollment, are there any students on IEPs that are taking these college-level courses, whether it's dual enrollment or AP?
So for dual enrollment, we haven't started that in our own department yet.
Okay.
That's going to start next year. I mean, the data that I have from other courses, you know, math and science that have been running this year, Latin, there's a couple. It's not a huge amount so far. For our AP classes, we have, let's see, we've had one student in AP Euro this year, nine students with 504s. And then, we haven't had any this year in US history, but we did last year. It's kind of depends on the year. Is it overwhelmingly high numbers? No. The numbers of 504s have definitely increased in a way that, you know, I think is, we're glad to see that. Can we continue to look at ways to build it? Yes. At the same time, as you know, all IEPs are literally individual, right? So in some cases, it probably would not be appropriate for a student with a particular IEP to be in an AP class, but there are others that it would, right? And we want to make sure that there is not a barrier for a student who is ready to be able to do that. So that's really going back to, it's not up here anymore, but one of our action steps is to really study that and look at that.
And sometimes being ready means the appropriate scaffolding for that student.
Correct, yep, yep.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I just have a comment, just a thank you, and I really appreciate all the data that you provided with this, particularly the survey data.
Yeah.
And I really like hearing from the kids, and it's not just history, as you pointed out, their learning, their writing skills are getting better, their research skills are getting better, they're thinking better. I just, I appreciate you including all that information.
Yeah, it was fun. In a nerdy way, it was fun, yeah.
There's your data.
Yep, there's my data.
Thank you. I was actually looking at something that Dr. Adams gave us earlier on the number of kids who are taking the different classes, and I'm, you know, I'm just always amazed at the different electives that are offered. And I know that the Holocaust, that one had started a couple of years ago, right? And just to see the number of students in that one.
Yes, if I'm remembering correctly, we started Holocaust and Human Behavior in the 2017-2018 school year, I think, somewhere around there. And it has very quickly become one of our more popular elective courses, because I think students see the importance of it, right? And it's a study, it's called Holocaust and Human Behavior, because yes, you're studying the Holocaust, but you're also studying the question of, how could something like that happen, right? What is it in human psychology, sociology, that terrible events and genocides can occur? And how do we learn from those lessons of history, right? To make sure that they do not happen again.
Apply it to real life right now.
Correct.
It is encouraging, because there are some states that are doing away with it, which is really unfortunate, so it's nice to see.
I just want to also thank Andy, too, for taking this on, and then, but also taking like a different view of it. It's not, it's sort of showcasing what's working really out well, but also sort of thinking about how we continue to grow and improve and offer more, and I really appreciate the thoughtfulness around thinking, taking some of the feedback and thinking about school, how do we provide more student choice? How do we provide more access to diverse texts? How do we integrate with ELA at the elementary? There's a long, after, you know, 30 years in working in elementary schools, 30 years ago, it was an issue. We didn't have enough time for science and social studies. It's still an issue. And sort of, how do we collaborate with ELA and throw, and use the new reading program to make connections to social studies and science? And kids can be writing research, doing research around social studies topics. So there's a great opportunity there, and so I commend you for taking it on and also making a strong connection to how do we grow and improve. And so it's exciting. Can't wait to see where you go from here and some of the plans that you've outlined.
In one area I would just like to highlight, we've had a long history when we do a program review of going out for external site visits. This was the first time we've invited people into our own living room, and so I know that was a lot of work to organize, but I do think that aspect of the newly renovated program review was very valuable, inviting others into our living room, and I think that promoted some really rich discussion, so thank you for your work on that in particular.
And again, thanks to the staff, and thanks to those visitors for coming in, because they gave up, you know, some of their time and day to come in, but it was, I think everybody was mutually engaged and invigorated by the chance to observe each other and to talk with folks from other districts.
Set a high bar for Erica next year.
She's on it, she's on it.
All right, thank you all, appreciate it.
I would, yeah. Probably approve, sort of an action plan that's been outlined for you.
We will make a motion to approve the social studies program review action plan for 2024.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
May you oppose? Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, so, all right, so we did 7.5, 7.6 to receive summative artifacts for superintendent's annual evaluation and act as appropriate. Okay, great, sorry.
So I presented to you a longer document that includes links to various artifacts for the four goals that I set out at the beginning of the year. So I just want to walk through each of the goals and what are some of the evidence that you'll find. Just a reminder around the evaluation process, we're at the summative evaluation stage. At this stage, I'm presenting my progress towards the goals that we agreed to at the beginning of the year, and performance on each of the standards related to those goals. You'll use that information, that evidence, those artifacts that I'm providing, your observations of me, in order to then create the summative evaluation, which I know Ness will talk more about afterwards. So what my role right now is to sort of share some of that evidence and reflection, of which I did in that longer document. And here, I'm just sort of highlighting some things, so some explanation of what I've included. Goal one was to continue to work on entry and direction setting for the district, and that included some action steps around continuing to work on the strategic plan, implementing the professional development plan, year one of the tech plan, the equity audit. Remember that all of those plans were developed in conjunction with other groups of staff. The professional development plan was, we have a professional development committee, and we try to reinvigorate it every year with new members. The technology plan has a technology committee that worked on an update and progress monitoring of the goals and the benchmarks that we stated, as well as the equity audit and plan that we came up with was developed by a group of people giving feedback and outlining next steps. And so throughout the year, we've been giving you some updates. We still owe you an update on the goals for the equity, as well as the communication plan, and we're planning those for July, as this was enough for one meeting. So we'll be doing, continuing to provide you updates. And again, the goal, as we saw with the social studies program review, is to show that we're working towards goals and objectives, towards improvement in areas, highlighting our strengths and working toward particular needs as they arise in a cycle of continual improvement, as well as to work towards continually strengthening MTSS in grades K through 12 and creating opportunities to amplify student voices. I shared some artifacts for this goal, which include the strategic plan updates that we did throughout the year, the presentation and the overview that allowed the committee to be aware of our progress. I think I'd like to also think about how we take a version of this and create something for the community that allows the community to see the progress that we've made and what kind of format that might look like. That's, is it to highlight a particular goal each year, each month, and say, here, we just want to highlight some of the great work that's happening by staff, students, and families? And so is there a way to sort of communicate that connection to the wider community as well? Is something I'd like to work on for next year. A link to the communication plan, like I said, in July, Heather will be here to share our progress towards some of those objectives, and a glimpse into some next steps and objectives for the coming year. There's some sample screenshots of the mock new website that you'll see on July 1st, which also includes an app that families can access. As you saw today, the MTSS updates for winter and spring that show students are continuing to make progress. As you also saw, we're also looking at where are the particular areas that we need more support in. You've heard us talk about, and you'll see that in the strategic plan, PRS and EAST are going into their third year of the Inclusive Practice Academy. And the coach, we've developed a really strong relationship with the coach that comes with that, and all for free from the Department of Ed, and we've engaged her. We engaged her in the spring at Foster to sort of also help with early literacy, and she encouraged us to apply for the state's tiered literacy academy for the Foster to help, again, strengthen that early literacy in the early grades. And I think we have initial indications that we might have been accepted. And again, that's all all free for professional development that our staff can engage on. And it's sort of a school-wide support where you're getting some professional development, but it's also embedded within classrooms so that teachers are getting support right in the moment. So it's great to hear something at a workshop or get the idea in a meeting, but then to have someone who can come and say, and write on, hands-on, right in the classroom and support you with a coach in support, the staff right there is really, the way we embed and change in instructional practice. There's a link also to some open architect reports. It's a platform we've used throughout the year, and we've sort of kept adding additional data dashboards and sharing it with the leadership team. One of the areas that we've sort of struggled with is how do you have data in grade six through 12 where there's less of that literacy and math data and you're shifting more to contentary instruction? About midpoint, we added a dashboard that allows us to look at failures, grades, the distribution of grades in all of our grade six through 12 courses. And so we began talking both at the middle and high school about how do we use that data to identify kids after the first quarter, first semester, who might need additional support, who are struggling. We also, you've heard throughout the year how we've used the attendance data as well, how can we use the attendance data to also engage with students who might be disengaged in some way with school? How can we support the families as well? So all of that work sort of evolved and emerged throughout the year, and we'd like to begin strong next year with how do we use those, that data with teachers and teams? The team leaders will help us, and teams at the middle school are really going to help us, how do we use that data to really make sure that we're intervening and providing supports for students who might need additional? So we started that work and it emerged, and we're super excited about a dashboard we added at the end of the year that allows us to also track special education IEPs, when the annual is due, when the initial was started, how many initial vows we've had, and so we're excited to see how that can help us track the need for staffing and personnel at each of the schools. It also gives us some information on the types of disabilities at each school and the numbers. So also giving us information about how are we responsive to the needs of the students and the staff. We tried to also reinvigorate the wellness committee this year, meeting monthly, and engaged in a year-long conversation around SEL, looking at the WRBS data. We had a great pilot done by community members. We want to, as soon as we establish our high school principal, see if we can, it's an area where there's significant need, and see if there are ways that we can find within a very rigid high school schedule, times within the day to engage students to talk about anxiety and stress, especially in grades 11th and 12th. Ninth grade has the advisory, 10th grade has the health class, and then in 11th and 12th there's less touch points for students. So that's something we'd like to see if we can, even if it's in a small way, get started next year so we're talking to kids on an ongoing basis about anxiety and stress and ways of coping. And we've got some good resources that were piloted and used that we can build upon. In the spring, in response to what we saw, our increased SEL needs of students, we started a task force, and I shared a sample meeting, we visited various programs in the area. We want to start off, the notes are of our last meeting to sort of set some goals for the beginning of the year, which include visiting some other programs. We've established some beginning partnerships with some consultants to sort of help, again, embed professional development in the building and work with teams around particular students that we may be struggling with and being hands-on and giving suggestions and helping the team come together to address students who might have challenging emotional challenges. So, as well as talking K through 12 around how do we continue to develop tier-one SEL practices, including our positive behavior intervention systems in each of the buildings. So those are initial discussions that were started. We had some good momentum, and then the end of the year came, so we're ready to start that work again in the fall. Reinvigorated to sort of think about, particularly about what we might be asking for in the next budget cycle to support the particular needs that we're seeing, including the creation of therapeutic learning centers in the elementary especially. An example, district communication, I added somewhere around November, a superintendent's report that allowed me to be able to share on an ongoing basis things that were happening in the community and in the district, as well as a sample leadership team memo on a weekly, every Sunday night, I send a leadership team memo, done that for the last two years of highlights and upcoming events, and it's also a place to acknowledge the work of the leadership team. I have a running document, and it's about 480 pages long of leadership team memos for the year, of two years going. Goal two was to strengthen procedures for hiring and recruitment and retention. We had some stops and starts to some of this work and want to see if we can finish some of the work that we started into the summer. We created, a goal was to create a hiring guide, develop materials to distribute to prospective applicants, update the hiring process and establish quarterly substitute training, creating a system for para-training, providing training for hiring managers, and strengthening our partnership with the Mass Diversity and Education Network, and track data for retention and recruitment. So some of these goals, and this is, I think, a goal that'll continue in next year, Ayesha's not here, but we are super excited to have Mary Ann Foley, who brings a wealth of experience and human resources and is helping us, I think will help us as we start thinking as a long-term goal, how do we automate? Many were very paper-based still, and so how do we go to a digital platform that allows for easier, faster processing of new hires? So I shared with you some artifacts, the table of contents for a faculty handbook. I think this was one where we kept working up through February and then have had a stop. It is something we want to work on over the summer with Mary Ann, and it will be, as you can see, a collection of stuff that exists in multiple places, just put into one place with a table of contents that's clickable and people can find really easy. For example, what's the field trip form? Where do I find, if I, my name, I've changed my name and I need to let payroll know, where do I find that form? So our hope, and our hope for all of these documents is that they're dynamic and they keep evolving, and we keep updating them on an ongoing basis. There's a table of contents for the hiring guide, we shared that with hiring managers last week, and had a conversation also about getting feedback as we start the summer hiring season of things that we're seeing that sort of slow things down, and what we needed from them, as well as our goals to continually improve the process moving forward and bring consistent implementation of best hiring practices. We revised the substitute handbook and were able to share that with all our new substitutes and did quarterly substitute training. I led most of those trainings, I'd like to get to the point where I have some other folks who are leading it in the office, and so my goal, my next step is sort of to do the train the trainer and hand it off to someone else. We had big dreams also of para-professional, we know we need to do better to onboard our para-professionals. We started a para-professional handbook, I think, and we're working on it with good intentions up through February, and sort of it's one of the things that had a stop, but we'd like to try to see if we can even get a version up for the beginning of the school year to share with paraeducators, and then keep revising and editing and making the document grow, as well as I have big dreams also of having a para-professional orientation that we do for new para-professionals in August, and then do it on a quarterly basis so that we're just not, you know, saying, go, and here's your classroom and go to it. There's a little bit of work around, here's what your role and expectations are, and a little information as well to support them, and most of our paras are working with students with disabilities, and so here's a quick toolkit to help you get going and support it as we move forward. I know Katie and the ESS system principals have been working on some initial para-training for next year based upon a great professional handbook that we found, that we'd like to share with all of the para-professionals at the beginning of the year. So we'd like to really develop a robust way that we're supporting new para-professionals as well as support the ones that we currently have on staff. Goal three was around special education. That was the program evaluation for special education, enlisting partners in that program evaluation and creating some short-term and long-term goals, and supporting a transition for a permanent executive to director. We weren't successful in a permanent executive director, but we are glad to have Dr. Cataldo for a second year. Some of the artifacts that are here are the SED program evaluation, which we shared with you earlier in the year. We hope to come in July with a one-year update based upon the needs that we saw and say, here are our objectives and goals and actions Dr. Cataldo and I will be sharing in July with you. We think a one-year kind of beginning objectives for next year is probably the best way to go. We just ran out of time to get enough feedback from different stakeholders, but we do know from the program evaluation, there are things that we need to immediately address and work towards, and we heard all year long about many of these, so they're not new. One of them might be that you're going to see reflected our entrance and exit criteria for our specialized SED program. So that's going to be a very, that'll be a very core component of one of our goals that we've outlined. One of them, another additional one, is sort of making sure the transition to the new IEP is an opportunity for us to bring together teams around a new process and engage families as partners within that new process. So that's some of the things you'll see reflected. Those are all things that we have been ongoing and started, and we know we need to continue into next year, and will serve some of the needs that we've, that have been addressed in the SED program evaluation. We did some work to extend our preschool and pre-K programming and pivoted when we weren't able to access the Foster for next year, but have a plan to support and grow. And I think that's a great opportunity for us to provide early childhood programming in the community. We saw a great need, and our hope next year is to start earlier. We were kind of late to the game in January, which is kind of surprising, but hope to start as early as October, November next year so that we can be as competitive with other programs in the area, and, which also means we need to begin thinking about the spaces that we have and how we extend the program. But we're offering more peers than we had last year, this year, and the year before, and we're offering more full-day options for our students with disabilities, which provides them more access to having their needs met. We know that early intervention is extremely important in closing gaps, and the more we do that in the primary grades, in early childhood, the more success our students have. So we're excited about that, and I think there's a great opportunity moving forward. I already talked about the social, emotional, behavioral health task force, there's some additional artifacts there. Goal four was to continue to work on my own skills as superintendent. You'll see reflected there, the timeline and work with the new, the induction program for new superintendents, as well as coaching meeting dates that I had as well with my coach as well, highlighted there. Finally, in reflection, and I noted this too in the document, it's been a hard year. I think Carrie counted how many salary negotiations meetings we have, I think we're up to...
Hundred and eighteen.
Hundred and eighteen. That's all times at least two to three hours in length.
Oh, that's right, nineteen.
Which could amount to almost three months of work. And so I think that has been, has made it challenging for us at the central office and the leadership team to continue some of the work, but I'm very proud of all of us, as you saw tonight, we've continued to try to have a focus on students and learning and improvement, as well as, there's an opportunity, one of the things I love about school is there's a summer break, and there's an opportunity for folks to reset over the summer and to start again, new group of students, and we all come back with fresh eyes to the work. We have a lot of work to do, as we saw from the impact on negotiations on our school community, and it impacted our staff, our students, and our families. And so some of the work we'll do this summer is to try to rebuild those relationships within our leadership team, making plans and being purposeful around what are the steps we can take to help build that sense of community. And maybe it is to help come together around our students and the particular needs that we've identified. This is a community that cares deeply around its students and their progress, and we've heard, as we, in the wellness committee, in the SEL behavioral task force, our students are telling us they want to talk about social, emotional health and learning and community, and maybe that is a way that we can come together as a community, how do we galvanize all of our strengths to support our students moving forward? So that's some of the work that'll start this summer that needs to continue into next year in building structures and places for that to happen is important. I also reflected on there, I think that it's a great place for us to go back and reflect upon some of the work that had been started around restorative practices and community circles that we had some training on, and how do we use those tools to help build community so that we can make spaces where folks feel like they've been heard and seen? And I heard someone say this the other day, and I think this is a good shift that needs to happen, I think this is a societal shift, right? Everything seems like it's a battle to be won instead of seeing opportunities for problems to be solved. So how do we shift from, oh, this is something that we need to win, I need to win this battle, instead to say, oh, this is a problem or concern, let's think about how we come together, what are our ideas, our brainstorming, ways that we can solve this? And sometimes there are little things we can do to shift and support and take advantage of a problem, and sometimes there are larger things that take more time, a long term, and what are the baby steps, smaller steps we can take towards those longer-term solutions? So in reflection, that's also something that needs to be reflected into next year's goal and into next year's thinking is about how do we come together as a, as a school community overall at all different levels, both at the district level, at the school level, and also engaging our families and students. So there's much work to be done yet. So it was much more than a surprise.
Any questions? Feedback, thoughts?
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was a lot of work putting that together.
All right, do we need to do anything here?
No.
Yeah, okay. Okay. So then 7.7 to discuss scheduling of superintendent's annual evaluation. So given all that Dr. Adams just shared, want to go through the process of what we need to do as school committee members. Just a reminder that each school committee member will fill out an evaluation form, providing feedback on each of the goals and standards that they relate to. More specifically, from the MAS C guide on evaluating a superintendent states, the school committee completes a performance review and end-of-cycle summative evaluation report assessing attainment of the goals and superintendent's performance against the standard. The chair will compile the individual evaluations and create a composite summative evaluation that is presented and discussed during a meeting and voted on. This meeting is going to take place in July, so given all of the things that I think we're still going to hear and some of the scheduling conflicts, we're going to hold off and not do it on the July 15th meeting, we're going to schedule another meeting in July, so something that we'll have to discuss what works. So we can, we can just figure out everybody's availability, because I want to make sure that everybody's available and not away on vacation. I know July is difficult. vacation. I know July is difficult. So summative evaluation comprises a rating of all four standards, a rating on the superintendent goals, and the overall rating based on, on the two ratings. So those four standards are instructional leadership, management and operations, family communication, oh, sorry, family, community engagement, and professional culture. And then the superintendent receives a rating for each of the goals and the ratings on each standard. The rating of the goals and the rating on the standards are then combined into an overall summative rating. So I was thinking, given we've got the July 15th meeting, I was going to send over the forms for everybody to fill out, similar to last year. We don't have any new members, so it'll be pretty much the same as last year. I was hoping to get the completed evaluation by each member by July 19th, and then we can plan for a meeting for the 22nd if, again, vacation schedules allow. Okay, so documents that are going to help you. Dr. Adams just went through her artifacts, the goals that she had presented at the beginning of the year, and then the word document that will help, help you, guide you on the ratings and comments on, on her progress. I think that's it. Any questions?
Questions? No.
Okay, I think that's it.
I was one of the vacation people. I'm not leaving until the 28th.
Oh, yes.
I am one of the vacation people.
We'll figure it out.
Till the 21st or 22nd?
I was thinking 22nd, which is a week after the 15th?
It's 22nd.
Okay. All right, so possibly the 22nd?
Yep.
Okay, all right, 22nd, July 22nd. Is that what?
I think so.
Okay.
Have to be timed as if we're getting to the 28th. It's three days.
Three days?
Three days in October, three days in April.
Yeah. Okay. Does it, all right. Do we want to do the 24th, the Wednesday? Are you still gone that week?
I am, but-
Okay. All right, I'm going to throw out some dates to everybody, and then we'll come up with a date that works. Okay. All right. Moving on to item eight. No, actually, I don't think we have anything for the next two, 7.8, to approve grants and donations. I didn't see anything. And to approve surplus and act as appropriate.
We do.
Oh, we do?
Yes.
Sorry.
In your packet, I think there are, from the Foster Library, a set of books. I think they're beginning to do some cleanup in anticipation of a move coming up sometime next year, and the library has asked to be able to subsequently either donate or remove the set of, a set of books.
Okay.
Did Foster or so?
It was Foster.
Of the-
I will say Foster.
Elimination of books.
Okay.
I will make a motion to declare as surplus library books from the Foster Library listed and to authorize the library coordinator to dispose of them at the least cost to Hingham.
I so. And discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, thank you. All right, then, item eight, Subcommittee and Project Reports and Warrant Signed. Tim?
I don't have anything. The Human Rights Commission is meeting tonight as we speak, again.
Of course.
It's an ongoing conversation we're having. The SNAP has a board meeting tomorrow night, which everyone should sign up for and be a board member of SNAP.
Yes, we do. Ask me in August. I've had a couple weeks of vacation.
Salary negotiations, good news. So we have a ton of agreements with Units A, the teachers, and B, the paraprofessionals. We met, as you all know, in mediation on June 11th. And so the status now is the parties are reviewing the documents and with a shared goal of ratifying them, hopefully, as far, as far before June 30th as possible. So-
(inaudible)
Yeah, and we just want to thank the Unit A and B negotiating team for all of their work over the past 19 months that we've been at this and had a lot of good discussions and collaboration. And, yeah, we just appreciate everyone's time and effort.
And thank you to the salary negotiations team. A hundred and nineteen meetings is a lot, and I appreciate it. I can't even imagine how you're managing jobs and meetings and school committee commitments, so I appreciate it. Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you.
It's a shout-out to Erin and Jacqueline, because they were at probably all of-
Not the best drivers.
Yes, that's true. Yes.
Michelle?
I, today, the School Building Committee took a tour of the new Foster Elementary School. We, I can share some pictures with folks. We, it's amazing the progress that has been done. I know it's disappointing that it's not going to open when we anticipated it to, but when you walk around and you see the scope of the work and how, just the amazing detail and the, even just the electric room with the geothermal heating, all the work that they have done. The space is absolutely amazing. It's going to be fantastic. The classroom, we got to see a couple of, up to the third floor and got to see some of the classrooms that are pretty finished. They're big, they're bright, so much storage space. We took a little tour of the outdoor classroom, which is going to be an amazing place. I don't know how they're going to schedule who gets to go out there and how they're going to use it, because on the nice days, everyone's going to be out there. But it's just, the views are beautiful from the building. I mean, it's the, it's going to be phenomenal when it is ready. So it was great. It was a good tour.
Yay.
It's great.
It's exciting.
It's very exciting.
Ally?
I've got nothing, Jen.
Jen?
The Finance and Facilities Subcommittee met this morning. We started to discuss our goals for next year, updating those. Ayesha went over the electric buses grant that we got and the kind of the rules and regulations that will go along with that. It was just kind of starting the discussion, and we'll, we'll talk about that again in our next, our next meeting. And then we went over the FY24 preliminary numbers, and then we will, Ayesha will be bringing those numbers to the full school committee.
I think we said August.
On August.
Yes, because they're going to do the, the retro pay for everybody, so she's going to work on it after that's done.
And there are warrants in the packet.
Okay. And I don't have anything. All right, so nine, any items under 48 hours? No. Okay. Item 10, we're going to adjourn to executive session and not to return to open session. Take a motion.
Hold on.
It's a law.
I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session. Sorry. To not to return to open session pursuant to Master of Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, for purposes of to approve minutes from the executive session held on June 3, 2024, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
I so declare.
To approve minutes of the Salary Negotiations Subcommittee with participation of the full school committee, executive session held on June 11, 2024, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
I so declare.
To provide an update on negotiations, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
I so declare.
To discuss grievance from the Hingham Education Association, Unit D, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
I so declare. Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, all those in favor. Tim?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well. Okay, we're adjourned.
Thank you.